I'm so happy today to have Kesia Warner here. I said it right?
You did.
Okay.
You did, you got it.
Thank you so much for coming by. I know this was kind of impromptu.
Yeah.
But I really wanted to talk to you. Um, I've had, I've had a decent number of people from District Three on, but you're running for District Three Portland City Council.
Mm hmm.
And we were just talking about it a second ago, but you're kind of late to this. And I think all the stuff you were saying was totally correct about like, you know, it's funny because I've had other guests, like I had John Walker on here and I thought he was late. And, but there just keeps like more people keep coming and I still think there is time to make an impression on people. Because like we were just talking, a lot of people don't even know like what district they're in and all that kind of stuff. So, um, but I'm glad you're running because like we were just talking, I think you bring a lot of experience that I don't necessarily see in District Three. And also you seem like the top or one of the top, if not the top, top law enforcement kind of candidate. Which I like in District Three. But, um, but yeah, just tell me a little bit about yourself and why you got into this and.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I'm pleased to be here. Um, I did come in late. I came in mid to end of August. And I had been thinking about running earlier in the summer, which still would have been by a lot of people's judgment, late in this, in this election race, uh, just because people had started their campaigns a year.
I talked to some people last year. Yeah.
A year ago. You know, this feels very much like everyone ratcheted up the importance of a council run, because it's a shift in our form of government. And I, I guess I don't disagree, except for just the race seems much more serious this time. I've been around the city and the county for 20 years with other races and it's always been a couple of folks put in. They go and do the, the rounds within, you know, going to forums and doing interviews. But this just really is where people are professionalizing their race. And it's in some ways, this is me editorializing it and me coming in late. This isn't sour grapes. It's just me editorializing. But coming in late and not being part of the small donor program. Everyone's using that as a proxy for who's qualified. And that's really unfortunate because then again, money's in politics, you know? Then you're saying, well, because you're able to raise 40 or 80 or whatever you are able to raise thousands of dollars, that you're the right candidate. That just means you may have started early and that you are out there shaking the trees. But someone like myself or maybe a John Walker, whoever's coming in late, like there's not the fair shake so much in this race. That's not to mean that, you know, everything's always going to be equal. I'm just saying that that's how it is in this race. So it's kind of interesting.
Yeah.
That's my observation on that.
Yeah, it is. It's funny you say that because it is, I definitely see that as people almost frame it as like a soft endorsement. If they meet any of these small donor tiers. I was also curious, like, do you, do you have an opinion on the, um, kind of donor swapping stuff? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I do. I absolutely know what you're talking about. Um.
I just, as somebody who's not necessarily a part of that.
No, I mean, I'm absolutely not a part of it because I didn't even make the threat, the, the date cutoff for the small donor campaign program. But I find it to be unfortunate. Um, I would say that those individuals I'm sure weren't trying to game the system. You know, they're probably being collegial and trying to help out, you know, their, their fellows and, and running. But it's unfortunate because for me, it would have hit me as like on the edges of ethics. And I'm not saying, that's just like, everyone has different judgment.
Yeah.
If it's not spelled out, people use common sense, but common sense isn't the same for everyone. So I, I wouldn't have done it. It would have just felt wrong to me.
Yeah.
Um, but since I wasn't in that situation, I can't actually say that. I'm just saying armchair quarterbacking. I'm saying that I probably wouldn't have done it. But I, I think that they should not be held to this, uh, sort of like, we're going to punish you for doing it.
Right. Yeah, that's kind of how I feel. And I've talked to a lot of people who are lawyers about it and they, a lot of them feel like there's nothing's going to happen from it and.
I feel like it's a distraction.
The, the sort of maximum penalty with, and I appreciate Will and We for covering all of it. It's a really interesting story. But like putting this maximum jail penalty, I don't think it's like helpful to anything. It's just, I don't think that's going to happen and it's unrealistic. But, um, but yeah, it's an interesting situation and I think it'll probably be something going forward that they'll kind of try to correct, obviously in future.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
I mean, this is how things happen when you start something new.
Right.
And then you realize, oh, well, we didn't think of everything and now we're going to have to add that. But again, I don't think that there was malfeasance and I, and I would say that it's not, uh, ill intent. It probably, you know, in my mind, wouldn't have been ill intended. It just feels to me like people were trying to be generous.
Yeah. Using the spirit of the program maybe in the wrong way or something like that.
Sure. Yeah. And so, um, the original question, I don't know that I answered.
Yeah. I just, I'm curious about you and.
Yeah.
Like your, your experience, you just have such a crazy pedigree of experience, which is rare, it seems like in District Three. And I talk a lot about, like, I like a lot of these younger candidates in all the districts, but I do feel like there's kind of a lack of experience and like, just, yeah, a lack of experience. And so I think, I like what you bring.
Well, I'll just say out of the gate, and this is probably what a lot of folks say to appeal to a certain audience, but I'm saying it because this is me. I'm not a politician. I, I mean, I, I understand politics. I've worked in local government for more than 20 years. I understand the politics of the city and the county and the region.
Employee, you haven't, you're not an elected person. Yeah.
And I'll, and I'll tell, I'll tell you a little bit more about that background, but just in terms of running, like me running for an elected office, was not in my plans. Even though for years, people, friends, colleagues, because I have a large network of also fellow government employee worker friends. So my network is, that's what my, my friend network consists of. And so a lot of folks have said, you should, you should consider running for, fill in the gaps, mayor, council. And I've always said, no, I'm like, uh, that would be a pay cut. And actually, I would, I would like to, you know, just do the, the good work, the good operations work. And, um, over the past year, I had worked, um, on the city's transition internally, how to shift our form of government from what it is now to what it's going to become and set up the bureaucracy for success. So I was the lead.
Part of the transition.
I was a part of the internal transition team, leading the public safety service area and what that would look like. So working on that for more than a year, actually, it's a year and a half. I was really intrigued by what it's going to mean out of the gate for this first group of elected officials and how that's going to hardset our form of government and how it's working at least legislatively and in terms of decision making into the future. And so earlier, as I mentioned, like earlier in the, um, in the summer, I was considering, well, maybe I would throw in my hat, you know, to, to run for council. But then, um, my mom had been sick for a while and she got really sick in July and, um, she passed away in August.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. It's.
Really pretty recent. Yeah.
It's recent. And, um, so it was expected, but nevertheless it's super hard, you know? And so it took me out of my reality for a couple, like a month and a half. And then I came up for air, you know, mid-August and looked around and I'm like, do I, do I still want to run? And I think I had more resolve then to do it than anything because I was like, why not? You know? My mom always was my biggest believer in the things I could do. And she thought, you know, the, there was no ceiling. She's like, you know, before she passed away, we talked about this. And so I'm like, yeah, I do, I do want to do it.
It was kind of a form of motivation.
It was a form of motivation. Some could say it's a distraction from the grief that I was feeling, which will be there, uh, when the, when the campaign's over. It's going to be there regardless. Um, but yeah.
Makes sense to me. Yeah.
So, um, so I did. And, uh, really thinking that for me, the thing I would offer would be for this first go, this, this first group of folks that are going to be setting the, the table for a form of government, that I'd be able to provide stability, structure and help us be able to create something that's functional, that works for the operations of the city too. So that's like being that sort of crossover and being able to talk about policy and being able to talk about operational realities.
Right.
Is super critical because working in city and county government and, and being close to politics and the, the elected officials' decision making. I've heard so many ideas that were great visionary ideas. But in terms of the execution, there was not ever the truth testing, like could it work?
Yeah. Implementing and.
The implementation then gets pushed down to your operating directors and bureaus to make it happen. And then they're left with this thing like, oh my gosh, how do we do this when it, it can't work or it's got some major challenges?
Yeah.
So I feel like my operational background would really be super helpful.
Yeah, it definitely is. You know, by the time this episode comes out, my special I was telling you about with the county and the city on the new form of government will be out. But one of the things we talked about on there is that the, the first two years, and I know District Three, I believe is a two-year term.
Yes.
They were really, at least the city representative was really clear that like the first two years are going to be a lot of solving the transition problems. I think that could be really helpful, especially since you.
I have some ideas and I have some ideas about how it could be done in a way that maybe it could fast track that, getting to a place where it's functioning. Right now, I don't think that these are in the plans from a city perspective of, of doing what I would recommend. I, I left the city in May. Um, I was a deputy director for Portland Fire. And, um, now I'm with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management at the state where I'm the director of business and compliance.
Okay.
And, um, so anyway, leaving the city in May, I kind of lost that thread of where they are with actually setting up the city for the transition.
But I mean, that's still very recent for.
It is.
At least to me, I don't know. Yeah.
It is really recent, but with everything moving at light speed with the transition, honestly, like who knows what's happened in the past three and a half months since I left. But as far as my background, I've been in city of Portland, um, since 2003. And I've worked for Portland Police. I've worked for the Portland Bureau of Transportation, the city budget office. And, um, now I mentioned Portland Fire was my recent, uh, employment with the city as the deputy director. So I really do have a really, you know, holistic understanding of the city. And I had mentioned when I was with the budget office, what happens when you work in the budget office? You get a portfolio that you manage for, maybe it's one year, maybe it's two or three years. But you have three or four bureaus that you work with during that period of time. From a assistance perspective, so technical assistance, giving guidance as a resource. But then in a somewhat of a regulatory role where you're looking as an over, like oversight for their financial decisions, some of their operational programs, you write analyses, give recommendations to city council and the mayor. So, um, I probably have had all the departments, you know, in my portfolio at one time or another. So it gave me at least maybe like the 10,000 foot level understanding. Or maybe, maybe greater than that. Maybe it's a thousand foot level of how those bureaus operate.
Yeah. No, that's, that's really interesting because one of the things I always bring up on this show is, um, and I asked the county and the city guys about this of like, because I, I get asked and I'm curious too. I'm like, in this new form of government, who do you suggest people go to of the three seats in any district? And I actually think your background and experience is helpful in that sense because I know we're trying to get it. And we are getting away from this bureau assignment system. But that's what I asked these guys was like, you know, if I have an issue with water or fire or whatever bureau it is, who am I supposed to go to? And it seems like with your experience, like that's a real, it makes it easier to approach you if somebody has an issue in District Three.
I, I would.
So like, how do you feel about that?
So there's, with our, our new structure of council being in these pods, I'll just call them pods, their districts, pods.
Yeah.
Pods of whales, pods of candidates. So there's going to be three that will have to work together. And I think one of the structural deficiencies in how the system's been set up now, and maybe they'll change it, is I feel like each of these pods of candidates should have a liaison, uh, you know, coordinator.
Capcom person.
Yeah, someone.
Communicator.
Yeah, someone who's working among the three and then bringing together the three. So there's shared awareness of issues.
That's a good idea. I've never heard that actually. Yeah.
Um, that way there's not an advantage disadvantage for any of the three. And if there's distinct strengths or deficiencies of any of our candidates, because some people are coming into this race green. Know nothing about city or maybe regional government. Maybe they have other qualifications that are great. Maybe they're a business person. But it's going to be, you know, trial by fire. They're going to step in and go, oh my gosh, I don't know where the break room is. Or I don't know, you know, who to call when my laptop doesn't work. It's going to be fundamental from them for, from the start. Um, and then there's people like me that I could step in and I'd be like, help desk, I need this. And they'll be like, oh, hi Kesia.
You know where everything is and.
I do.
Who to call.
So I feel like a liaison between the three would allow for an equalization.
Yeah. I really like that idea because that's my, it's kind of a two-issue thing for me. And one of them is I also kind of foresee inner district finger pointing is what I call it. And I think like you said, that is a nice kind of equalizer of, um, you know, if somebody takes on a task or an issue and they, and the public's not happy about it, I could just see them, you know, one counselor pointing the finger at the other counselor.
Yeah.
Or something like that. And so.
I could see, I could see infighting, which bothers me a lot because we're trying to serve our microcosm of the city. But then this is another thing. I think of it as concentric rings. So we're really going to be our, you know, our slice, the guts of Southeast. Doesn't sound pretty, but it really is. It's the middle section. So that's who I will represent directly. That's my constituents. But I also know my constituents are every single person within the city of Portland. And I need to make good policy decisions across every district. So there's a couple lenses we're going to have to toggle between all the time.
Yeah.
And if there's a really important decision that needs to be made citywide, we have to be able to meet that challenge to step out of our myopic, I'm just representing these 167,000 people in my district. I need to be able to think about Linton. I need to think about, you know, Southwest. I need to think about, you know, our gay neighborhood. I need to think about all of the areas of town and what their needs are for whatever big policy decisions there are.
Cause they'll be voting on a lot of that stuff that would affect everybody.
Broad policy. And I just think that this, like doing voting the way that we're doing, feels, it feels like a mismatch, if I could say it like that. I know why we're doing it, but it feels like a mismatch because truly as a, as a representative of the city, I'll be representing the whole city. And that is how I think anyway, because that's how it's been as I've worked for city and county, is I've thought about the whole enterprise and like how the things that I'm doing, whether it be fire or in budget and policy or in transportation, how it is affecting the whole city or the county. So it'll just be different. Um, but one of the things that I was thinking as far as our structure as a 12-person council, that will be super helpful if we do this right, is having a facilitator. Someone that's assigned as a facilitator for the 12-person council.
Okay.
And it's not the mayor, not the city administrator.
Okay. Yeah.
They're going to have day jobs. They are not going to be able to herd the cats.
When they're, you know, the city and the, I'm sorry, the mayor and the city admin, they're supposed to be dealing with the bureaus mostly, right? Anyway.
Yeah, that's, I mean theoretically.
Yeah.
But there's still some, um, there's still some, there's gray area and how their roles will be actually, you know, determined once they're in them. So I could see a facilitator would help with communication that's within the body of 12.
Yeah.
And when there's.
Between, between districts as well, maybe.
It could be between the districts, but I just think when you have 12 people that.
Yeah.
You have different opinions on issues. That to get to agreement or to get clarity or to not have, you know, fistfights breaking out, which let's hope that doesn't happen. But having everyone be able to talk civilly and productively and not get their hackles up, go into their corners and have their ego play it all out.
Yeah.
Which with council, I mean, with a five-person council, I've seen that over the years.
Yeah.
12 people just amps that up.
Yeah, you could see, I'm blanking on the other word, but like stonewalling and like, um, what's the congressional word? I forget when they, when they just talk and talk and.
Filibustering.
Filibustering. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
See kind of a lot of that with 12 people going on and.
Any number of tactics. And since you have to get to, you know, your magic number for votes, then you could just have your alliances that form. And it will, could be by districts and it could be, this is one of the things that's keeping me up at night now. Another thing that maybe wasn't thought about when they first set up the idea of this form of government with the four, four-year term, two-year term. You could have the four years who are going to be outlasting the two years, form alliances. I don't mean to be conspiratorial. This is not it.
That's interesting. Yeah.
You could have them form alliances because they're going to outlast the two-year termers who are going to be lame ducks going in.
Right.
And that to me feels more concerning than anything is actually that it would be unequal out of the gate.
Yeah.
Because of the duration that we would be in the seats.
Yeah, no, I think that's a realistic concern of like, kind of orienting strategy and all that stuff around term length. Definitely seems like a real possibility.
I know I'm going so deep in the wonkiness. It's just, this is like, like.
I love it because I don't know, you know more than most people I talk to. So it's like.
So this is how my brain works. I just start thinking about this. And so I think being able to level set at the beginning with this group of 12 to say, here's all the realities on the table.
Yeah.
Here's how we can work well together.
Yeah. I'm curious about a couple things. I mean, I have so many questions, but, um, I'm curious about, let me ask first about like your background with public safety. I always ask people.
Sure.
About the balance between PBB and PSR. And I've never really had anyone on this show who doesn't think we need more police with our staffing levels. But, um, I'm just curious, how do you feel about that with the balance between those two and how you see them existing, coexisting?
I think they're different.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think PSR has a lane. I think it needs to be defined what that lane is. It has not been defined. There has been a lot of reticence in defining what PSR should be and what it shouldn't be. And I think that we should assign what we want them to be and what we want them to do. And it'll be easier for those that step into the role to be PSR responders to own that. But leaving it.
With more definition.
Definition. And what's the real mission? Like what are, what are the objectives of PSR?
Yeah.
And leaving it amorphous just means you leave it up to an individual employee to go out into the field and decide how they're going to deal with someone in crisis or in need. And that's not really what we want. We have some really critical issues with people that are out in our community, generally on the streets, that need help. How can PSR help them? And what are the very specific things we expect for PSR to deliver on? And then I would feel really okay with spending $10 million or $13 million on the program or more if we're going to staff at 24/7.
Right. Cause right now, those are the two big issues I, I always hear and bring up is there's no ability to transport people, which just seems like a huge missed opportunity or I don't know. That would seem pretty core to their mission if they're trying to actually help people. But then the other one is I think that, what do they stop working at like nine or PM or something like that or?
Um, I think that they've stopped at 10, but it could have changed. Their time could have changed. So it's not like they don't go late because, and this is a reality too. So I mean, this is where we get into how we work as a region. But we don't have social services that are available for individuals after a certain time in the evening and until a certain time in the morning. So if you had PSR or another entity transporting people that aren't needing to be taken to the hospital or to jail, because it's something that's unlawful, there's not really a place to take them.
Right.
So then working 24/7, does that make sense if we don't have a social network?
It doesn't solve the problem. Yeah.
That's set up. We have to have all the pieces in place and they have to all be worked on concurrently. But that's another challenge for us.
Yeah.
And I think that one of the things that I see as an opportunity, and this was a, uh, something we grappled with when I was with Portland Fire as a deputy director, is how we fund PSR with a sustainable model. And people bring up the Medicaid funding and being able to access that. And there's some barriers to that because with Medicaid, you have to have identifiable information that's provided on the individual that you're helping.
Right.
To report it back.
Collect all this. Yeah.
And a lot of people in crisis, they don't have the wherewithal to provide that information. And so you get into this, uh, what would we do in those situations? But if we can cross that bridge, whether it's legislative fixes or, you know, just getting to a place where we could access federal money, then we can set up a billing model. Then we can think about transport. Then we can do all those things that really amplify a program. But we really do need to, to crack that nut.
Yeah. Cause it's definitely not, at least in my view, it's not, it's not delivering on the basic purpose of it, of alleviating the other first responders so that they can deal with crime and fires and all that stuff.
One of the things that's interesting about the data, and, um, I don't remember the exact data, but I will just say that the types of calls that PSR is going on is for calls that otherwise would be sent to police. I mean, that's, I think that you've, you're probably aware of that.
Yeah.
They don't go to fire. They're not fire calls. A very, very, very small percentage, uh, would be maybe fire.
Yeah. I'm just saying, and you know this, I'm sure, but, because the fire department responds to a lot of those, you know, wellness check type calls. And they're just occupied with a lot of that and overdoses, obviously, and all that stuff.
Overdoses are a really big part of the call load for fire now. But what I was going to say is that with PSR being available and the promoting of PSR as one of the services underneath the public safety umbrella, and really doing a great job, I have to say they did a great job marketing the program.
Right.
It just created a new call volume. So it's actually not taking down police's call volume. It's just incentivizing more people to call. So.
And it, and does that all go through, what's it called? Uh, BOAC?
BoAC.
Does that all go through there basically?
Yeah. Yeah. So that, I mean, I'm just saying like, that's just something to know.
Yeah.
It just increased call volume for 911.
Right. And, and with, with the issues we just talked about, does that really alleviate anyone's problems? Like, I don't. I don't know what they do besides show up and like hand out water or talk to people for a few minutes and then leave.
I think that they have, they monitor people that are out on the street. They develop relationships. And then sometimes they have the ability to connect people with social services if they want them.
And if it's available, if those services are available.
And if it's available. A lot of times, you know, individuals on the street, they don't trust. They don't want the services. And so relationships are super key. And I found that out when I, I mentioned I was the parking enforcement division manager. And, um, having our teams go out and addressing, um, car camping, people living in RVs and in cars and in tents in the right of way. And so parking enforcement officers would go out and make contact with individuals that were, um, you know, camping in the right of way effectively. And they would talk to them, give them literature, ask if they needed help. And it was a high-touch program. And sometimes they would have individuals that would want to be connected to the services. And it was successful that that happened. Um, but a lot of times individuals just, just, they wanted to be left alone.
Yeah.
And so that, that's really hard because then you have, the next thing is, well, you got to move along. Because you can't be right here.
Right.
And then it becomes this just moving people around, which isn't effective policy at all. Because you're actually not addressing the problem. You're not helping people in crisis or in need, really. You're maybe helping temporarily with neighborhood livability issues. But it doesn't help the individual to get out of a situation that's not humane for them.
Right. That's what I tell people, like voters and stuff that I talk to about just unsheltered camping in general is like, it's not helpful, like basically what you just said, it's not helpful to the people in the tents, not helpful to the neighborhood. It's a lose-lose situation. And it's been like that, it seems like to me for, I don't know, six years or so now. It's been a long time, but.
I think we're coming up on about 10 years.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, the homeless crisis is going on, but.
Yeah.
I have so many questions about, so were you doing the parking thing you just mentioned? Was that, is that, I know P-Bot does the green tag thing, right? You see those green tags on RVs and stuff? Were you part of that as well or?
Yeah.
Okay.
The derelict RV program.
I'm so curious about that. Like I drive by them every day here, like on.
We, we stood up the program when I was with P-Bot.
Okay.
And.
What do you, what does that mean? What do you mean?
Well, so we created the program. The program did not exist. And it all, it had been in city code that, you know, you can't have an RV, a recreational vehicle in the right of way for longer than seven, 72 hours. And then you're at risk of it being towed.
Okay.
But then you have to do the, the warnings. So then it's a sequential warning process.
Right.
And you have to have enough staff to go back and be able to check on them and do the sequential warnings. And, uh, then have the connection with the towers to take the vehicles off the street. And you can't have individuals living in the vehicles. They can't be in the vehicle when they're towed.
When it's moved. Yeah.
And so there's just, there's a lot of challenges around moving derelict RVs. And when I say derelict RVs, these are the ones that are like has, they're hazardous.
Yeah.
They have hazmat situations where they're dumping.
Usually immobile.
Sewage into our streets.
I'm glad you were talking about it because I, I bring it up all the time when people, I go to these events and people are so focused on climate stuff. And I tell them, you know what? We can tackle here locally. If you're concerned with the environment and climate is, are bees that are dumping this crap into our waterways and all this stuff? And people, I, I feel like people just don't think about it. I mean, you can literally see it like in rivers and, and just parks and stuff of.
Yeah. And the greater number of people that are living. Yeah. And the greater number of people that are living, and, and I'll say it's not just RVs, it's people that are camping because going and cleaning out the encampments, which happens, whether people are comfortable with that or not, if they get to be large and unsafe.
Yeah.
They get cleaned up. And when they're cleaned up, you know what the responders find? Buckets, like Home Depot buckets of human excrement.
Yeah, waste. Yeah.
And sometimes that's just dumped, not by the people cleaning up, but that's what's just going into our public spaces. Because they don't have other alternatives.
Right.
And so um.
It's kind of gross, but it's actually happened, you know, because I live, we have all these unpaved roads, I'm sure, as you know, in Southeast Portland.
We're Southeasters.
But I walk my dog over here, other, one of the same roads every day. And I'm pretty sure what an RV would do is just dump their tank along one of those, because there's like toilet paper and it just smelled awful and there's all this stuff.
I think you're probably right.
Yeah, I just, that's my theory of what happened. But yeah, it, it is gross because people have gardens and stuff lining these streets and it's just, I don't know why we don't do more about that. And that's why I always tell people, if you're concerned with the environment, that's something we can help address right now in Portland.
So that is one of the things with the derelict RV program is that these would be um, the non-operable.
Right.
Uh, windows busted out, um, systems not working.
They have to be towed to be moved.
They have to be towed. Some no longer had wheels.
Or engines or something. Yeah.
I mean, when we're talking, sometimes they're trailers. So they just, they wouldn't have an engine. Some that had engines didn't have engines. I mean, some were RVs and didn't have engines. Some didn't have um, tires or wheels or anything any longer. And so these were just, it was just trash, but people were living in them. And from a hu- like a humanitarian perspective, I'm also looking at it thinking, that's no way that any human should live.
A lot of times I get, yeah, there's like rats and stuff coming in there and they're living with disease and stuff and.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's just so much about that that was, it's not okay for, for the human condition. Um, and I, it's not that I'm applying my judgment to it. It's just that it was unsafe.
Yeah.
And so anyhow, that's what the derelict RV program was targeting, was moving these because not only is it not okay for the people that were using these as their habitation, but for the neighborhoods, it's attractive nuisance. So two would be there and then six would be there. And then you have tents and then it just becomes a encampment. And so that's really a problem too for the neighborhood um, that it would be in.
Was that, I'm curious about like the origins. Was that just a monumental lift to get that thing going? Like, what was the conversation around? Like, we gotta do something?
It was, it was so much work. And um, at the time, this is 2000 and like, I think it was 2016. And there wasn't the public sentiment really, or, or political will at the time to move people off the streets.
Yeah.
And this was before COVID where.
That kind of exploded though. Yeah.
During COVID was also when other policy decisions were made to not move people off the street because we were experiencing the other pan- you know, pandemic crisis. And so we were trying to be humane in that way. However, that was not a policy that worked as we're seeing now. But the earlier, you know, like 2016, there was challenges around what do we do with this sort of burgeoning population? It sort of just grew overnight. And we didn't have resources or systems to really deal with it. Um, so we were taking baby steps and dealing with like, this was the worst of the worst, these um, RVs that were just in terrible shape. So we developed a partnership with um, Portland Police who has a storage yard in Northwest Portland to be able to take, yeah, to take the RVs there as a sort of staging ground to clean them out.
Okay.
And then as the um, dismantlers, and at the time there were only two in our entire region.
Two people?
Two companies that would, that would do it because it's a, it's a money loser.
Right.
It costs, and I, I think they were just charging what their cost was to do it. There's really not any materials out of an RV that's salvageable.
Yeah.
It's all just stuff that has to be disposed of in a landfill, which is terrible. But it's, you know, foam and plastics and all that stuff. Very little wood.
Not a lot of recyclable.
And very little metal.
Usable recyclable stuff. Yeah.
And so um, we worked with those dismantlers and we paid them, we paid them, the city paid them, just so everyone knows that we were paying for this. About a thousand dollars or $1,200 per RV to get dismantled because we needed to move them off the street. There was really not any alternative, which is why you could see people were just offering on Craigslist. And you know, a 1983 Winnebago for $5 on Craigslist because they were like, how do I get rid of this thing? No one wants it.
Yeah.
And then people that, you know, were experiencing homelessness were like, $5, I'll go take this thing. And um, so they would get a free home, but it would be in awful shape. But it was just this, I mean, this gets a little bit more wonky. It gets to the desire for us to address the recreational vehicle industry.
Yeah.
And have them have some skin in the game about when they sell, when they are producing manufacturing. Selling RVs, there should be some kind of tax that's placed at certain points so we can get some revenues for this dismantling process.
That makes sense to me. Yeah.
Has to occur inevitably. Other, otherwise they end up in fields.
Yeah. Well, and I think it's such a strong argument for all that environmental stuff we were just talking about, that we're literally paying at a loss to, to do this, just to, you know, make our community better. But.
Yeah.
But it, I agree with you too, because it's, I think about that when I see all these old Winnebagos and stuff, I'm like, it's just such a different, you know, I grew up looking at those things as luxury items and they still are like new ones, but, but all these old seventies, eighties, whatever ones we see that are called zombie RVs or whatever.
They, they just age out.
Yeah. And there's, and there's, you know, thousands of them out there and, and yeah, I agree with you, maybe at a state level or whatever, we could implement that, that just seems like a good idea.
I could see state, federal, and I know that there's a big lobby, you know, big lobby organizations.
Yeah.
You know, for the recreational vehicle industry.
Cause it's definitely, at least on the West Coast, it is a widespread problem.
But it should be for every, because knowing what, now that I know a lot more than I ever thought I would about the, the guts of a, of an RV. But you know, there's just not much that you can do with it, except for put it in a landfill.
Yeah. I, I believe it because I don't talk about this much, but one of my least favorite jobs I ever had, I worked at an Airstream dealership and those are like, maybe you can get more out of those, but the ones we're talking about are mostly like fiberglass and like plastic and foam and stuff. And yeah, I totally see how you couldn't salvage much from that.
No. And, and so that, that program took a ton of work to set up because we had to develop all these relationships. And then there was the public sentiment around it, which, you know, we got plenty of hate mail about it.
I'm sure at the time, yeah, it was way less popular to.
We had to sell.
Do anything about.
Yeah. We had to sell counsel on it. We had to put really tight guardrails around it so it wouldn't be abused. And we weren't just taking advantage of having a policy so we could yank people out of RVs and then take their RV because the neighborhood had complained enough about it and they just wanted it moved. There had to be real criteria. And so, you know, we had to be impeccable. And so it's been a pretty successful program, but it's slow.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was gonna say. It's interesting that, because I'm glad somebody like took initiative and did something about it, but now it seems like we've gone to the other extreme where like, like sometimes it, and I don't know if it's because people just peel those things off or ignore the people that come out and talk to them, but it seems like it'll take like months or even up, you know, up to a year or something to, to get anything done. And I know this is after your time.
It is after my time. Yeah, I left in 2019. Um, there, 2018, 2019 from that position. And um, the program was up and running and has done great work. You know, like they, they've been just kind of created this system that has, I'm sure had improvements, but it's, it's still functioning much the same. But what you're saying, I think gets to the human, the, the city employee aspect uh, or needs around this program. And that is you need to have the officers that can go out.
Human outreach. Yeah.
And they have to make contact. They have to have eyes on the vehicle. They have to look at a tag, although the tags entered into their handheld system so that they're keeping track of like, we've tagged this and we know the dates and all of that and the location. But they have to then have it as a follow-up and a follow-up. It's like case management.
Right, right.
But that takes people. And currently there's probably two, I'd guess two teams. I don't know that in parking enforcement, sorry if I got it wrong. Uh, but there, there probably is about two teams that do this.
For the whole city.
Yeah. And so two teams, I think of probably four.
Okay.
But you know, that's not, not many.
It's a lot of ground to cover.
It's a ton of ground to cover. So you know, if you had ideally more people, you'd be able to keep on the schedule of, oh, in 48 hours, I'm going to go back to this location and check on this group of vehicles and then I'm going to do the next step and then the next step.
Right.
Um, but until you get more staff, that's going to be doing that. And that, that gets at the color of money too. I'm just gonna say, because parking enforcement does great work for the city, great work for our more um, the metered areas, the ones that have high traffic, high residential, you know, density, um, the business communities to keep enough parking curb space for the demand or try to turn it over so that there's more availability. So like PG.
People can find.
PG Park, Northwest 23rd, downtown, um, any of the areas, central east side, where you need to make sure that there's going to be turnover so that, you know, people that are visiting um, need to have, can find a place to park.
Something, yeah.
So with our metered areas where you, like downtown with meters, Parking Kitty, you actually are having revenue generation and that pays for a good portion of parking enforcement or Portland Bureau of Transportation, that, that program. But with the decline in visitorship in some of our media, the metered areas, particularly our central core, the revenues for the program have gone down. And so it now has to be funded by the city's general fund, which is challenged all the time and is, is not uh, as healthy as it once was. So now that parking enforcement is looking at having to, you know, have some additional infusion of funding, this is where you have to make decisions about how you're going to use the city's general fund, limited general fund. If we want to have what we're talking about with the derelict RV program, that doesn't bring in money.
Right.
It's just a service.
A loss. Yeah.
But if it's important to us, we should pay for it. And I think that's just like, from my perspective as a budgeteer and as a person that I've worked in policy and budget for as many years as I did, that's what this council will be facing is those types of decisions of, this is an important service. It's going to take money to do it. We're going to take some money from this thing over here because it's not as important. Or if we can postpone doing something over here. Or it's nice to have, but it's not a core service. I think those are, that's going to be our trade-off conversations we're going to grapple with.
Yeah. Yeah. And I was curious too, I have so many questions about that. But you, do you feel that way about the PSF fund? I know there's a lot of conversation about, I mean, that thing's just loaded with money. And a lot of people want to do different things with it, which I think is smart. It's just like,
I think for.
If these other areas are struggling to find funding, like.
I think that it should be used in the spirit in which the voters had voted it in. That's, so I'll say that's my general statement. And I, and I believe that. But I also think that it was general enough language that was put in the ballot that it could be redefined to expand to some additional things, like using it for some infrastructure needs that the city has. You know, that's still, is going to be within the spirit of what the Clean Energy Fund was intended for, which is when you're building things, making sure you're using the right materials, that it's, that it's going to be um, built in a way that it's adhering to carbon, you know, emission reduction.
It's almost like a LEED standard or something like that. Yeah.
I mean, you could look at our uh, like road paving, like there's, I'm not saying I have a specific list, but I do know expanding it would make sense because being in uh, operating bureau in the city and then PSF being available and having not enough funding in this case, it was fire, looking to rebuild some of our fire stations that need to be expanded because we have electric engines now. Which is a, I mean, it's a connection to PSF. They are larger. The electric, our electric fire engines, the apparatus, they are a bigger vehicle.
Right.
And so, and a little bit taller, they just need a different bay. So a lot of the, the, the fire stations were built in the, the 50s, 60s.
Yeah. Using that to upgrade those facilities.
To upgrade the facility. So doing some renovations or expanding a bay or whatever, but these are, you know, like, you know, any capital construction project is expensive. So being able to apply PSF funds for that type of a capital project, we had pitched that. And it wasn't something that the committee had um, had supported at the time and maybe they will. But I could see that doing those types of things is still within the spirit of the fund.
It does make, it seems like it to me. Yeah.
So it would help us utilize the funding that is being brought in. So if we're not, if we're not able to utilize it, then we also should think about, do we have to have the taxation at the level that we do?
Yeah.
It's one or the other.
I see that as a, almost chronic thing, more with the county, but I see that as a thing in this area that happens a lot. And metro too, but um, I was curious, I want to ask you like, because there's, there's this community uh, district three meeting happening a little bit, but I'm curious, like, what do you hear from district three people about their concerns with the district? Cause like we were talking before we recorded about how I, I'm kind of on the outer edge of district three and I identify with like D4 issues, livability issues, sidewalks and crime and homelessness and addiction.
D1?
Uh, yeah, district one. Yeah.
You said four and I'm like.
I'm sorry, I mixed them up.
No, I know, no, I know. I'm like, I know that, I knew what you meant, but.
There's so much, yeah, so much going in my head.
I know you know.
Yeah, district one, East Portland. And I'm just curious, like, what do you hear mostly from people? Is it more that type of stuff or the more inner east side stuff or?
Well, so I'm, I'm in between, my slice is in between district four here, uh, you know, on this edge. And then district, uh, district one and district four. District four being the cutoff is Cesar Chavez. Um, and then on the other side is East Moreland. And then that's, that's going to be district four.
Right.
And then over here, you know, we've got district one that's just, you know, hop, skip and a jump away. And so um, in my neighborhood, I hear both. I hear the concerns from, you know, what's going on with downtown and the central core, because that's what district four has a lot of concern about. And then I'm also hearing about livability issues or East Portland. And um, a lot of it around the impacts of homelessness and what is the city doing to support the neighborhoods? I think that I hear a lot about that, just even talking about the RVs, like you and I talking about that. I was out um, canvassing in uh, the Clinton neighborhood yesterday and I was talking with some nice neighbors. Um, Joan and David. And if you by chance are watching this, it was great talking to you. Uh, but one of the things that they brought up was they've had, and they live, I want to say like two blocks from division.
Okay.
So you can understand, like, their world has shifted tremendously in the past seven years with as many visitors to that neighborhood as has happened.
Yeah.
But what they see are um, the, the vehicles that are parking in their neighborhood, either parking up on their sidewalk. There's neighbors that uh, can't get out of their, their driveways. It's impassable, some ADA issues, but they brought up what they're seeing a lot of, and this is interesting because I've seen this in town too. Wrecked vehicles that are just parked on the side of the road. To which I have no idea how that's, why or how that's happening, but they've said that they've seen that quite a bit in their neighborhood. And um, it's almost as if there's an accident that happens, a car just is parked and it stays there. And they said, this is a real problem in our neighborhood and we need for the city to do something about it because we call on it and then, you know, we're not getting the responsiveness. And I think it gets to parking enforcement prob- or police and parking enforcement not having resources to deal with something that isn't an emergent issue at the time. However, it's livability stuff for them. And I mean, I could speculate that those vehicles might be stolen and then they, you know, get wrecked and then they're just left. But um, so it's livability things and they just, I think the main thing is that they didn't feel heard by the city. They're not getting responsiveness. And uh, so I think that that's, that's what I hear mostly.
Yeah. Yeah, that's most, I don't know, the ti- it's always, for me, it's always homelessness, crime, addiction, not in that order, but just, that's what I always hear about it, um, at least where I'm at, but um.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense. Um, yeah, I was curious if you want to talk anymore about, I'm just so fascinated with your background because this is, you have this like trifecta of fire, police, city, county. I mean, that's, that's beyond a trifecta.
It's a quadfectra.
For, I don't know, how do you, I, I'm just curious if you want to talk a few minutes about that, but I'm also curious, how do you feel about the county now? I always ask people like, what would you do to improve that relationship? I just, I person, personally feel that the county is just completely dropping the ball on this mission with mental health and homelessness, which I believe is mostly in their jurisdiction, being county, mental health services and all that stuff. But yeah, as much as you want to say, but I know that's like a loaded question. There's a lot in there, but.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness, um I guess I'll start just by talking about being in public safety. And being part of the public safety sphere as long as I have. Um I really see how critical it is for us as an underpinning to do like almost everything else in the city that we wanna do. Like to get to good economic health in our city, we need to have a s- a s- like healthy and safe and secure.
Yeah.
City.
Something that's appealing and safe.
It's it's like it's the underpinnings. I would say that public safety on the face of itself to say, I'm just a pro public safety candidate. I am pro public safety, but for purposes, like that creates a civil, healthy and safe community. That's what we wanna live in. And so, yes, police and fire, we need to make sure that we are adequately staffing. In the right ways across the city for all the things that affect us. And so that's that's one thing about public safety, I think. Working city county, the relationship has broken down over the years at at a certain times, there had been more collaboration. You know, cuz I've been around for twenty years and I've seen where it has worked um and it's. Like anything I've, I believe that um it depends on who is in the. Positions of power at the time, so who's elected on both sides, how well the relationship is working. In some ways, I wish it weren't that way because we'd we need to have that, you know, stabilizing force that's just city county. We have alignment, we know our lanes, we do the thing that, you know, is working for the public because the public doesn't care. If a city provides a service or a county provides it, but they just want it.
Know a lot of the time, it's it's frustrating, when I find someone who knows what the county and the city does and what they're responsible for, I'm just like, thank you for.
People talk to, yeah, people talk to us about schools, they're like, yeah, the schools are terrible and I'm like, well, you know. There's Portland Public Schools and then I try to, you know, like, and then there's then there's Metro and then there's Multnomah County and then there's the city, you know. And I, but then I'm also like, that really doesn't matter because we really do need to figure out how to create this ecosystem of where our intersects are.
Yeah, and like you said, it's just cuz it just seems like so we're not. Fighting with each other, like it just constantly seems like the city and the county or even within the county, they're infighting and it just.
So it's a.
We need to all be working together.
Like the cult of personality thing at the city and county, um so at any given time, it can work really well and then it can work not well. And I think we need to develop a way that we have shared understanding and investments in certain things. So that we're mission driven instead of personality driven. If we could take some of the ego out of those conversations and not have the posturing. And just work, I mean, this is all like if Kezia were queen, this is what I, like, this is what I would do, but that is what I would do. Because we're not doing the public service by just getting wrapped up in. I'm, this is what I want, no, this is what I want, it's really like, okay, well, again, like I get to, how could we facilitate these discussions? And get to a place where we can actually move things forward.
Yeah.
Rather than get boxed in, um so that would be one of the major things that being part of the new council that I would. Look to do is how do we as a body make sure that we are working as much as we can in concert. With the elected officials that are on the other side of the river. And define, redefine maybe, redefine what we are doing together. Because last time that it was done in any real formal way was with measure. Resolution A or Resolution B or I'm I'm gonna get it wrong, but it was in the eighties.
Oh wow, okay. That's when I was born, yeah.
I found a document, it was like this, I think it was Resolution A. I have to think about that, any, whatever it was, it was like hand typed document, I found it in a file.
Like a typewriter, yeah.
Yes, and I was like, oh, this is that thing and um it was a good faith effort to define what the city and county. Will be responsible for.
Wow.
And largely for, you know, since that time until maybe ten years ago. The city and county more or less observed those lanes, you know, on the margins, sometimes not. Um but then ten years ago, we had the social crises that emerged and everything got blurred and then. Certain folks didn't work so well together and then it's just been not as clear, it's been murky.
Yeah.
So redefining like, how do we work together on social services that we both are invested in? And being the city's the the largest consumer of county services, you know, it's like the tail wagging the dog. We have, you know, we're invested in what the county's doing.
Right.
And we need for them to be reflecting what our needs are as the city. So rather than being in competition.
I think that's a great idea, yeah, kinda updating that.
Yeah.
Responsibilities, we're just looking at that, um I wanna go through a couple quick questions here, um I'm curious about. I talk a lot about police staffing on here, but I'm curious, in your view, is fire staffing where it needs to be now or is it kinda still, okay? I mean, I know they've struggled with recruiting as well, right? Is that the main?
They, no, actually.
Cuts or something, yeah.
Recruiting is not difficult, I mean, it's like you have less in, less interest in, I I should caveat that. There are challenges in recruiting, people still want to become Portland firefighters. That's, but not in the numbers that they had in past years.
Okay, I I was, I hear a lot about there's just a first responder crisis like that in general, like people don't wanna get into these.
In the fields, I would say that's true, I mean, you see the declining numbers because um. It's just a, it's a, it's a really tough field.
Yeah.
With the issues that both police and fire go on now.
Right, it's like who would.
The calls.
Yeah.
A lot of our firefighters and police officers, they did not sign up to go and um. Go on, you know, sequential overdose.
Right.
Calls to have no effect in any outcome.
Yeah, it's not getting any better.
They they may go on the same call to the same location multiple times in one day because someone's overdosed more than once. And at the end of the day, they will say, hey, we'll call, the ambulance is there. We'll take you to, we'll take you to a hospital and they refuse. And so nothing changes, they've done nothing except for maybe administer Narcan, but a lot of times it's administered before they're there. Because people have it and if you're gonna put yourself in the shoes of police or fire. You're going to feel like, what did I do?
Right.
I got into this job to help.
And that, I would imagine creates a lot of burnout as well of just.
It's a lot of burnout.
Yeah.
It's a ton of burnout and so this is where we get into maybe setting expectations going into the work now differently. Saying this is what it's like, but that's also why it wouldn't be as appealing to people who wanna come into fire and and police work. Because it's not tr- it's not the traditional police and fire, I'm gonna help people type of work that they've done. And so you see people that are interested in law enforcement and firefighting, self-selecting and going to different and smaller. Agencies. Where they don't have the social crisis that they're dealing with, they can go to a Sherwood or they can go to, you know, somewhere. Up across the river in Washington and they, sorry, and they may have um. You know, just maybe more of a career that feels fulfilling like they are helping people.
Sort of fits their traditional vision of what a first responder.
Yeah.
Does.
Yeah, and so that that is a challenge in recruiting, I'll say that's a challenge because and the reputation of. Does the city of Portland support first responders? Uh if you've been paying attention to the news for the past ten or fifteen years, the answer is from the outside, not really.
Yeah, and I, and I talk about it, I've been talking about it more and more cuz it's crazy to me cuz I, the police thing, I get it, like, I understand, there's still a lot of anti-police people out there. But I don't understand if if people aren't in like giving props to firefighters or ambulance driver or paramedics or anyone. I just don't understand.
Well, I'll tell you a little bit about it, I can explain it a little bit more, um so. I will say there have been members of council and with Commissioner Gonzalez included in that and. Prior commissioners have been supportive of police and of fire. But council as a body as a whole has been largely critical and a big part of that, it comes down to scarcity. Completely comes down to financial scarcity.
As far as funding bureaus.
There's some that, there's some commissioners that have been dogmatic and they're like, I just don't believe in this, like this kind of policing or whatever, so they are dogmatic and they just don't wanna have what we have. But from a perspective of do we support police and fire services, when you have a general fund that's not keeping up with the. Cut with the cost of living effectively or the cost of services. Um and so it it's shrinking in comparison to the costs of running our our government and this is not just city of Portland, it's not just Multnomah County. This is just how it's happening, so um our tax base is not keeping up. So that being said, you've got the biggest consumer of our general fund being police and fire. And so if you're looking at.
A target for.
It becomes a target. How can we have them be more efficient? How can we have them be smaller because I have these other things I wanna squeeze into the general fund? And so that's been the real tension, that's been the real tension. And until we solve that either by doing public safety levy and I know people don't want additional taxes, but. We have to rethink how we're distributing taxes in our, you know, in our city. And voters vote things in and then whatever's voted in by a money measure goes to the front of the line. Cuz then you have a carve out of money that's on your property tax bill. But really being intentional about how our taxes are allocated and for what. Because right now, it's not like that and we have a general fund that's having a hard time supporting our core services.
Yeah, and I know the general sentiment that I always hear is like people feel like they're panned through the nose, but they're just not seeing any services. And it's mostly again, county probably, but.
A lot of it is, yeah.
I hear from a lot of property owners that it's just like, I'm paying a lot of money, but I don't know, I don't see it reflected in any form.
Metro, Portland Public Schools, County. And all the programs, I'm gonna say, like, the programs are good in intention.
Right.
But it's the city tax base hasn't, like, we haven't been out there doing money measures. Um with the exception of maybe parks.
And I know there's a, there was a conversation about high earners leaving the area and it's less tax tax money for.
Yeah, I don't know that I answered the full question.
I like it, um the only other thing I was gonna ask about before I get into these goofy end questions is um. Uh I was just gonna get your take on deflection, how that's going, like, I just, there's there's a lot in there, I know.
I think that.
Again, that's county, but I just, I just always curious.
No, and and I'd I, I think deflection is, again, it's like well intended. But until we can set up a system of social services that can be there. And maybe get right about what we're gonna do with mental health holds and some of the ways that we would. Get people into services. Deflection itself is um, I think it's it's, I don't know how successful it's gonna be.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's, I'll I'll leave it at that, but I know that we're trying, we're trying to do something. But I don't, it feels to me a little bit like the PSR model of right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Where we've got folks going out there in high touch with individuals, but at the end of the day, that's like the what's next. And the what's next is really the thing that's important, how do we address these systemic issues? That individuals are having around mental health, substance use and then some other probably chronic livability. And barriers, you know, that they may have, I mean, those are the things that will help us not be in the churn of like, we have the same thing with the same people over and over again. So, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, no, I like, yeah, it's it's funny cuz the more I learn about it, like I was just, I had Eli Arnold on here a couple days ago and he, cuz he literally takes people. To the Sandy Deflection Center and I didn't know this until a couple days ago, but according to him. You know, I already knew there was like, there's like a dozen beds there, which just seems way inefficient or yeah, not enough, but um. But according to him, if people actually wanna go in there and utilize that service. It's a lot of harm reduction stuff again, which to me is just totally the wrong approach. It just seems like it's enabling whoever's being dropped off there to get back in their addiction um. And so, I don't know, but I I know it's, this is all very like ongoing stuff, they just, I don't know, a month ago moved the deadline back from September to October. And so it's, I don't know, all this, we're all in this together trying to figure out what's going on and.
I think until we can deal with these human issues that are very complex. In a way that is like developing systems, we look at other models. I think San Antonio has a very interesting model, they have a campus that's effectively, and if I miss speaking, I apologize, but it's.
It's like all in one.
It's all in one, this is what I remember from probably like seven years ago of doing some research into the San Antonio model, but. It's where they have an intake, um and if you have committed crimes, it's actually where you will be arrested. It's an intake process. And then they also have some self-selecting to come into the into the system as a treatment option. Um but then it kind of leads you to a path, down a path of there are social services, there's a hospital for physical health needs. There's mental health services, there's case management, so there's tracking. So I think until we get serious about setting something up where there's a handoff at every point.
Right, right.
And then dealing with people as in a way cases. Because a lot of individuals that are having mental health and substance use issues, it's the, it's the um. Neglect that happens after they're they're treated, where they're just allowed to go back out into the wild.
Sort of these gaps involved.
And no one's checking on them and so without that care and without that touch, that it just doesn't have an effect. So that's, I mean, there's a lot to that and it's how how it would be done is like, of course, how it would be successful. You'd have to make sure that you're adhering to people's individual rights and like all of the things have to be fit into that model. But by saying we're just gonna take someone to a center and we're gonna do harm reduction measures. Then you're actually gonna see the person again.
Yeah, and that's what I, I don't know, maybe it's obvious to other people, but when I was talking the other day about this, I was just like, well, that's not, I hear this continuum of care thing all the time. And that does not seem in any way to be part of a continuum because it just allows people to either go back to their addiction or go back to doing anything else. There's no, and I don't know, I talk about the carrot and stick a lot and I feel like. We've only been doing half of that a lot and I hear those words a lot from people, we need the carrot and stick approach. But I just feel like, yeah, we're not, we need this monumental level of investment and I just haven't seen it in Oregon or Portland um. And and but I do hear like neighboring counties are doing good things, they're, you know, starting to build these big centers, it's gonna take a while, but um.
The volume that we have here of need though, that's that's really a barrier for us.
Yeah.
Is that we have so much need and to set up a system, it would be extremely expensive. And it's still what we have to do, I'm not, I'm not, we shouldn't turn our back to it because it costs a lot of money, we have to figure out how to fund it.
That's how I feel and it's just, I'm just like, why, it, I feel like just now, like the state and the city and the county are kind of realizing that and they're getting this going. But I'm like, what was been going on for the past six years or?
It wasn't gonna get better on its own.
Yeah.
It wasn't just gonna go away.
Yeah, exactly, I don't know, um, okay, let me get into these goofy questions, I'm just gonna go through these quickly.
Okay.
This, these first ones, I'm going by memory because I've done them so many times, so keep, bear with me if I mess this up a little bit, um. Let's say you're parking somewhere like you did out here, do you pull in or do you back in normally?
Here?
Just anywhere, like if you see a regular parking spot.
A regular parking spot, like if I go to.
Angle, like you see the two painted lines and you're going to some shopping center.
Are you talking about parallel parking or are you talking like I'm parking in a parking lot?
In a parking lot.
Um it depends on where I am, I'd say fifty fifty, I'll back in.
Split in, okay.
Yep.
Um, do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter or maybe you don't like peanut butter?
I'm gonna say I'm probably a creamy peanut butter person.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I.
You're the first one to like, it's funny cuz I always use smoothing, some people that bugs them.
Yeah.
Creamy, which I I like that, I don't.
I.
Term agnostic, I don't.
I can go either way with peanut butter.
Okay.
But I think I like smooth slash creamy better.
And you go oil, no oil, the stir kind or?
Oh, I like natural peanut butter, but sometimes it's just too much of a pain in the ass to deal with and so I go with the already mixed.
Okay.
Trader Joe's actually has a good uh already um.
Really?
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't separate.
Stir kind, okay.
No stir, yeah.
All right.
There, I'm plugging Trader Joe's.
It's okay. Trying to think of the ones, um let's say you're getting ice cream somewhere, do you go waffle cone, regular cone cup?
I would go a regular sugar cone.
Okay, and what flavor are you putting in there?
Something fruity.
You like a, I always call it uh, what's that stuff called, sherbet? I call it sherbet, but I don't know if that's how you say that.
I have, well, because dairy's not so much my friend, even though I really like dairy. Um if I go to a place where they have good non-dairy like Cloud City up here on Woodstock and they've got some great non-dairy. Um I will get their non-dairy ice creams and they're great. Uh but if they don't, then I'll go with a sorbet or a sherbet and, you know, like any flavor. I'm one of those people that I could eat any flavor of ice cream and be happy, but I think the fruity flavors are.
Okay, I like it. Um these ones are new and these ones I've been getting pretty wild responses on, I'm sorry if these are weird questions.
Well, I just wanna go back to the ice cream thing cuz I'm gonna say this, this is like, you can tell what an analyst I am. Because I spent that amount of time talking about why I make a decision about ice cream, this is what I do with like everything that I think about.
Are you one of those people, do you get little samples on the little wooden spoon?
Sometimes.
Do that, okay, I always feel bad doing that, I don't know why, but.
I I don't like doing too many.
Yeah.
It's like when I go to a pub and I'm like, can I taste that beer and that one? And then, and then one of the.
They're like, are you going to buy some?
One of the bar keeps was like, do you just want me to get you a flight? And I said, that's a great idea. I like trying things.
Yeah. You might as well do it. Um, okay. So yeah, like I said, these are weird. I've not been getting good responses.
Okay.
Uh, do you have, do you have a favorite Taco Bell item?
I would say.
Everyone I've asked this, they're like, I don't like Taco Bell, but.
Well, okay. I grew up, you know, scrappy. Uh, I put myself through college, going through college, paying my own way. Um, I ate a lot of Taco Bell. And so the thing I would always get would be a bean and cheese burrito and I would get lots of packets of hot sauce.
Okay.
So.
You're the perfect one to ask this because my follow-up question is, do you have a favorite? They have different levels, you know? I like the fire sauce.
I like the fire sauce too.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I mean Taco Bell is, if I had a choice, not going to be my Mexican food go-to.
Right. It's not authentic, obviously.
It's not, but when I've been driving up the five from visiting family down in Southern California, I stop and get bean and cheese burritos.
Okay.
Not ashamed to say that.
Yeah. And I was saying this the other day, the, the nice thing about those is it makes me sound gross, but those ones you can keep in the fridge and they do actually.
They're okay.
Work as a leftover.
Yeah. Spoken like college students.
Yeah.
I'm like, yes, done it.
Okay. These are, do you have a favorite fair ride or like a Disneyland ride or something like that? People have brought up Oaks Park rides.
Yes.
Anything like that.
Well, at Oaks Park, I love the roller rink, but I'm going to say I'm terrible at roller skating, so I always fall on my ass and I am very, very, you know, like.
That's a fun one though, because I like the little.
It does have its guts and dicks. I just think it's great and it's a great environment. Now, as far as rides, um, I'm not a thrill ride person. Even though I'll do it, if someone like challenges me, I'll do it, but like I kind of hate it when I'm doing it.
I'm kind of the same way. Like I like.
I'm not in a. I'm not an adrenaline junkie.
Yeah.
At all. Which then again goes to my analytical self, right? I just, other people can do that. Um, but as far as rides that I like going on, I'll go on like little roller coasters. Those are fun. And then water rides. I like those. And like at Disneyland, um, my daughter's 15. And so we've gone to Disneyland, I don't know, like three times in the past, maybe five years.
Okay.
Because my, because my family's in Southern California, so we make like a trip and visit with them. And so when she gets out of school, we'll go down, visit family, go to Disneyland. And so we go on the water rides a lot.
Yeah. I always like, and I, I, I used to be a huge Disneyland nerd, so I'm sorry if I'm going on run while here, but, but I think Pirates is the perfect ride because you get a little bit of everything. There's a couple of drops, there's water.
Pirates of Caribbean.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would always bug my sister and say Caribbean. She's like, it's the Caribbean.
Either way.
Yeah. So Pirates of the Caribbean is the perfect ride and it's for all ages.
Yeah. It's just like, it pleases everybody. It's got a little bit of everything.
I will say.
I love the smell. I know that sounds weird, but.
And it smells a little dank in there.
Yeah.
Well, it's, there are some things that they had to change. Um, they, they redid it, I think like two years ago.
Well, they.
Because it was not keeping up with the times.
Yeah. They took out like a guy chasing a woman thing, but they also, what I didn't like is they added like Johnny Depp to a lot of those.
They did.
He's like an animatronic.
Yeah.
And I don't mind those movies, but I'm just like, just keep it the old like.
The old fashioned.
Yeah.
Uh, was great. But anyway, I do, I mean, I like those types of rides and yeah, I like going to, I like going to amusement parks and to fairs and these types of celebratory things. Not that I'm necessarily a person that goes on all the rides, but I like having people together and happy.
Yeah.
I also like parades. Um, I used to go to the, the, uh, Rose Festival Parade every year. I, I missed it this year because it was a conflict with my daughter's birthday. Um, but we typically go every year.
Okay. Yeah. Parades are an interesting one. I feel like people love them or hate them, but.
They do.
We do a decent amount of them here in Portland.
I actually walked in the parade two years, three years ago, um, with Portland Fire and that was super great.
Fun. Yeah.
Yeah. I got to be with the, like the old vehicle, the old apparatus that we have, the old fire truck. And then the, the honor guard walked and.
That's fun. Yeah.
It's great.
Okay. This is the last one I have and this one's pretty weird, but everyone seems to like it. I want to know your, I want to know your nut rankings. And so I'll give you an example. I go pistachio, peanut, cashew. Almond is a fourth place for me. And also I've only done this two or three times, but people.
What if people are allergic?
Shot down and said cashew isn't even a, it's like a seed or something. I don't know. It's not a nut, I guess.
Both almonds and cashews. I'm going in my analytical bent here. So just bear with me.
Yeah.
They're very benign. So like, if people have a strong feeling about nuts, they'd be like, not really into that so much. But I think that for me, I like Filberts.
Oh, okay. I don't even know if I've had one of those.
Hazel nuts.
Hazel nuts. Yeah.
I mean, hazelnuts and Filberts are the same thing.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I'm just saying, same. It's just a different term.
I've never heard that. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I've heard it, but I didn't.
Yeah.
Put that together.
So I'd say that's probably number one. And then number two would be toasted almonds. Raw almonds don't have as much flavor. And three, it might be pistachios. They're delicious.
I love them. Yeah.
And well, pecans are pretty good too. I'm glad I'm not nut intolerant or allergic to them.
Yeah.
That would really suck.
It's an early question and I haven't got anyone like that thankfully, but.
Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, so those, that's my nut ranking.
Okay. No, I like it. Um, I always ask people at the end, and I'll plug your website after this, but, uh, um, like if you could pick, if you were forced to run a company or a brand, is there one you would want to run? If somebody forced you to do it.
You mean if I could get behind like a product?
Like, well, like Nike or Amazon or something like gigantic. Is there like a brand or a clothing thing?
Something really dynamic like that. I probably would do probably something footwear. I love sneakers. So probably not Nike. I mean, I think Nike is all well and good and it has its market share and I like some of the products just because they have some decent design. But I'd probably go with like an Adidas or, yeah.
Okay. I like it.
Yeah.
I, I buy a lot of sneakers and yeah.
I mean, I honestly, I, I would say that's probably one of my guiltier pleasures is that my daughter and I, we will go sneaker shopping. As a matter of fact, wearing some gazelles right now.
I saw you got the three shirts.
Yeah. So yeah, that would be, that would be a fun thing to do. And then also something that would have to be with the, like the athletic industry in general. So like, I would love to have a gym. I'd love to have some kind of gym, whether it's a studio or a gym, yoga, um, boxing, something that would be like that because I feel like that kind of community just really appeals to me.
I like it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I, I don't know. I don't think I've ever told this story on the show, but I, I used to do a lot of video work for Adidas, like contracted. And the first time I went on the Adidas campus here in North Portland, I was wearing Nikes.
Oh no.
My boss called me, my, he's been on the show, Ben Friedel, but he was like, he was like, Andy, you need to go to the employee's store and buy some shoes right now and change them out. And I was just like laughing. I thought he was joking. But he's like, no, I'm serious. You need to go and like, we'll pay you back for the shoes, but they do not mess around with Nike on the campus.
No, I could understand that.
But anyway.
You're in their territory.
Yeah.